¿Regales en Cristo más o no?
As Chairman of Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us to celebrate achievement, review information, make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items will be discussed and voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policies for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. There are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. The quorum and courtesy are important elements of effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones and communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to act with order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken this time to join us this evening. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now, this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del dieciséis de mayo del dos mil veintitrés. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como le requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendenta, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos del personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y hastégase de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. We'll now move on to public comments. Ms. Oliver?
We as a Board in collaboration with the Superintendent and district leadership are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, staff will follow up within forty-eight hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas si fuera necesario a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador ha indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará dejándoles saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios. Gracias. Raquel Calderón.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Good afternoon, Dr. Torres. I'm here in person to give you good news about Rensseli Academy in Hartford, Connecticut. I'd like to tell you that I worked for Rensseli Academy as a substitute teacher for several years, and I'm very happy there. Rensseli had the honor to receive a phone call from a former student's parent who called and let us know that the well her twin sons are doing after graduating from the academy, and she credited Rensseli for giving her sons the ability to serve in a competitive job market. They only eighteen years old and they're making eighty thousand dollars a year. The other news is another student was when a second place winner for an essay category seven, ninth grades. The award was from a Hartford creative contest. In the last good news, a news is one of the students from Rensseli, which is she's in eighth grade, was yes, accepted to a Chaori Rosemary Hall and was offered a full scholarship for that school. I would like, I wish the Superintendent congratulate the vice principal over there, which is Ms. Thierry. The other thing that I wanted to say lastly is that we recently finished with the contracts for the, you know, for the substitute teachers, and I am personally sad about the insurance package that they gave us. I'm not really happy with that. I wish we would have kept the same package we had before. Nowadays, everything is very expensive, and we don't make too much money, and we could have get a better package than that. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Kiara Melendez. Muy buenas tardes a todos los representantes. Mi nombre es Kiara y soy estudiante de Buckley High School en el Campo del Sur. Estoy aquí para representar las quejas de todos los estudiantes de Buckley. Estamos aquí para exigir ayuda y para que nos presten atención a nuestros problemas. En el colegio donde estamos nueve y diez, no nos felicitan un lugar cómodo para aprender. No tenemos un auditorio, no tenemos cafetería, y por eso tenemos que usar algunos salones para comer y por la cantidad de los estudiantes. Todos los maestros no tienen suficientes materiales para enseñarnos bien en las clases. Por ejemplo, no tenemos un laboratorio de biología ni nada. La comida no es saludable, y tengo evidencia de eso. También tengo a todos los estudiantes de testigos que no comemos la comida para no tener problemas digestivos. El distrito tenía el dinero para construir nuestra escuela, pero en vez de eso, la construcción se paró. Así ha estado por casi tres años. Eso paró por no planificar correctamente y por traceras personas. Creemos que eso no es justo para ninguno de los que estamos aquí. ¿Cuántos tiempos más tendremos que esperar por nuestro colegio? ¿Cuántas clases más se tendrán que graduar sin una experiencia real de high school? Esto no son cosas que se pueden hacer pasar por alto, son necesidades reales. Como dije, estamos para ayudar y para demandar ayuda. Porque usted señora Superintendent nunca se ha reunido con nosotros. Ya es hora de que nos tomen en serio. Es esto nuestro derecho. Muchas gracias.
I'm only going to translate. Good evening, everyone. Her name is Kiara. She is a student at Buckley High School, and she's located at the South Campus. She's here to present all the complaints on behalf of other students at Buckley High School. They asking for help and for anyone to please pay attention to their demands. What they at located, the ninth and tenth graders, is not giving them a comfortable place to learn. They don't have an auditorium, they don't have a cafeteria, and that's why they actually have to use classrooms to have their lunch. Also, due to the amount of students that they have in that campus, teachers do not have enough materials to teach. For example, they don't have a lab, a biology lab where they can do biology class. The food, it is definitely not healthy, and we have evidence. All the students here from Buckley, they are thirty-six of them, can speak to that. They don't eat the food, and they pass all day without eating so they can avoid digestive problems. The district have the money to build our school, but the construction stopped, and it's been like that for almost two to three years. They don't know exactly why, but they don't feel that that is fair for any one of them. When we are going to have our school, how many classes have to graduate before they can have a real high school experience? They don't, they feel that that is something that is not to pass. Their real needs, and they asking for help. Please, they asking why the Superintendent never met with them. It is time for them to be taken seriously. Is there right? Thank you.
Jonathan Bravo.
Muy buenas tardes, miembros de la Junta Educativa y Superintendente Torres. Mi nombre es Sebastian Bravo y soy un estudiante de Buckley en el Campo Sur. Hoy me presento ante ustedes para hacerles saber que nosotros los estudiantes de Buckley merecemos una comida de mejor calidad, de la que ustedes nos dan todos los días. Ustedes comerían una carne de hamburguesa en un líquido apestoso que se puede caer al piso y rebotar. Es una cosa asquerosa. Nosotros comemos eso todo el día porque salimos temprano para estar en el colegio y llegar hasta tarde a casa. Nosotros no nos podemos concentrar en los estudios con hambre, aparte que no es saludable para nosotros. Una alimentación adecuada es prioridad para un buen crecimiento. No creo que sea justo que el futuro del país que somos nosotros recibamos una alimentación tan inadecuada. Por eso, en el edificio nuevo aprovechando que va a ser construido pronto, debemos tener una cocina con estufas donde el personal pueda cocinar una comida todos los días como en casa. Muchas gracias por su atención.
Good evening, members of, I mean, Board of Education members and Superintendent. His name is Sebastian, and he's a student at Buckley High School, South Campus. Today I'm coming in front of you to speak on behalf of the Buckley students that they deserve a better food with a better quality than the ones they receive every day. He asking if you guys will eat, I believe what he referred over here is Salisbury steak. It's some kind of like cream kind of liquid, not exactly liquid, but that is nasty. They don't eat it all day because they leave their house early to be in school on time, and most likely they don't getting back home until late. They don't, they cannot concentrate in school if they are hungry. Plus, you know, it's not healthy for them that they are growing now. They don't believe this is fair for the actual future of the people, for the future people of this country, which is actually them. They asking that in the new building, who is hopefully going to be built soon, they have a real kitchen with a real stove that personal can actually cook real meals every day like they do it at home. Thank you.
Makaya Morris. Nabita Boodoo.
Good evening, Board of Education. I am Nabita Boodoo, and I am currently attending Buckley High School Nerth Campus. First, I would like to address the lack of teachers that Buckley faces. One example is that for the past five months, the Nerth Campus has been without a math teacher for both pre-calculus and college-ready math. Our students learn math through an online platform, Edge Newity. There are many students who are discouraged and find that the online class is not very comprehensive. On Edge Newity, students watch videos as a form of learning. Students who do not grasp the concepts of what is being taught through the videos have no one to turn to for extra assistance. Buckley needs to have these face-to-face classes. For this to be successful, we need teachers. Having face-to-face classes encourages students to want to learn. Teachers make classes more fun and engaging than having a class full of boring and unexciting videos. Students feel a sense of relief knowing that they have a teacher to ask for extra help. Online classes create and enable students to be easily distracted, which leads to the incompletion of the course, which could then lead to a student not graduating. There is no teacher to encourage and motivate students to keep doing better to complete their tasks. Another problem is that Buckley High School was divided into two campuses on the opposite sides of the city. When I say we need our high school back, I am speaking from my experience and for every Buckley High School student. We as students are being deprived of the real high school experience. One result of this is that there are few or no clubs at all, at all for our Buckley students. The only extracurricular activities we have are the different sports. What happens to the students who cannot engage in sports or who are not interested in participating in sports? They have no option to participate in their school committees even if they wanted to. We have one cycle. We go to school, those who play sports go to their games, and those who do not go home. There isn't even an option to create our clubs or an extracurricular activities because we lack access to the necessary tools. Also, students in the Nerth Campus cannot stay after school even if they had activities since they are far from home and there is no late bus bringing them back to the South End. Additionally, the Nerth Campus students cannot participate in high school gym activities because of how tiny the gym is. Furthermore, even if we can create clubs, those at the South Campus who are interested are at a loss because we are not together as one Buckley nation. Every student cannot be included because of the way Buckley is situated. As I conclude, I want to say that I wish our future Bulldogs are able to have an actual high school experience and are not disadvantaged the way we are. Thank you.
Alejka Rios. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alejka Rios. I'm a senior at the North Buckley Campus. Some things I don't like about my school are that firstly, the food is horrible. The food needs to be in bigger portions, excuse me. The food also looks like canned dog food. I was working with the Girl Hartford Youth Program to create changes with our school food, school foods, and learned how, and learned how other students feel about it. Other problems is the bathrooms. They have, they have been locked, and we have to wait or look for a security guard to open it at all times. The security is, if security is not available, we have to go to the lobby bathroom, which is also for visitors. It would have been better if the security was there and the doors were unlocked. Thank you.
Yadelis Lantigua.
Good afternoon, my name is Yadelis Lantigua, and I am here speaking for Buckley High School students. I would like to bring awareness on how a lot of us Buckley High School students feel about not having enough pathway to choose from, not being provided with internships or field trips to get a one-on-one experience on colleges and jobs, and not having someone that can help us take smaller steps towards our big goals. I feel limited. I feel like I'm not being offered enough career paths to choose from. There's so many careers that students might be interested in, but they wouldn't know about them because no one is helping them. I do understand that there's some major teacher shortage, but we have to find a way on how the school can provide priority of courses with or without teachers. On the other hand, one-on-one experience are the best because they, they help us figure out if we are really interested in what we are going for. Mostly as seniors, students need to get a taste of what it feels like to go to this college or how it feels to work at this job because they are about to go into these places with no idea if they actually want to do it or not. And if high schools provide internships, paid and unpaid, students will have a better idea of what they are getting into or what they really want to do. Besides that, there's no reason in the school that is, there's no person in the school that is helping each individual student figure out what they want to do in life. To get a certain place, you need to take smaller steps, and to get there, a lot of students, students have traveled taking those small steps because no one is there to help them. One last thing I would like to add is that we should increase family financial awareness and help students apply for financial aid. The school does provide this, but not a lot of people know about it and don't know how to do it because most of the kids in the school are first-generation students who graduate from an American school because we are mostly Hispanic. The majority of Buckley High School is populated by minorities and students that live in low incomes. Thank you.
Kadaya Joseph.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kadaya, and I'm in the South Campus Buckley. This is my first year at Buckley, and I wish it was my last because Buckley sucks. First, the food is so nasty. Please do better. And I don't know who says we get healthy meals, but heating up food needs to stop. It's nasty and it makes people's stomach hurts. Second, the little school that we in is dirty, and it has bugs, and the bugs be flying everywhere, and also the Florida is very dirty. The classrooms that we are in are always hot, and we also have to eat in there because we have no cafeteria. Third, some of the staffs are rude, and they think because they're staffs, they could talk to us crazy, and we can't talk back because we're getting trouble. They need to set a good example. Nothing about this school is okay. Last thing, the small bathroom, no offense, but we are too big to use those little bathrooms. Finally, we need our school as promised. Thank you. Furthermore, even if we can create clubs, those at the South Campus who are interested are at a loss because we are not together as one Buckley nation. Every student cannot be included because of the way Buckley is situated. As I conclude, I want to say that I wish our future Bulldogs are able to have an actual high school experience and are not disadvantaged the way we are. Thank you.
Alejka Rios.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alejka Rios. I'm a senior at the North Buckley Campus. Some things I don't like about my school are that firstly, the food is horrible. The food needs to be in bigger portions, excuse me. The food also looks like canned dog food. I was working with the Grow Hartford Youth Program to create changes with our school food, school foods, and learned how, and learned how other students feel about it. Other problems is the bathrooms. They have, they have been locked and we have to wait or look for a security guard to open it at all times. The security is, if security is not available, we have to go to the lobby bathroom, which is also for visitors. It would have been better if the security was there and the doors were unlocked. Thank you.
Yadelys Lantigua.
Good afternoon. My name is Yadelys Lantigua and I am here speaking for Buckley High School students. I would like to bring awareness on how a lot of us Buckley High School students feel about not having enough pathway to choose from, not being provided with internships or field trips to get a one-on-one experience on colleges and jobs, and not having someone that can help us take smaller steps towards our big goals. I feel limited. I feel like I'm not being offered enough career paths to choose from. There's so many careers that students might be interested in, but they wouldn't know about them because no one is helping them. I do understand that there's some major teacher shortage, but we have to find a way on how the school can provide priority of courses with or without teachers. On the other hand, one-on-one experience are the best because they are, they help us figure out if we are really interested in what we are going for. Mostly as seniors, students need to get a taste of what it feels like to go to this college or how it feels to work at this job, because they are about to go into these places with no idea if they actually want to do it or not. And if high schools provide internships, paid and unpaid, students will have a better idea of what they are getting into or what they really want to do. Besides that, there's no reason in the school that is, there's no person in the school that is helping each individual student figure out what they want to do in life. To get a certain place, you need to take smaller steps. And to get there, a lot of students, students have traveled taking those small steps because no one is there to help them. One last thing I would like to add is that we should increase family financial awareness and help students apply for financial aid. The school does provide this, but not a lot of people know about it and don't know how to do it because most of the kids in the school are first-generation students who graduate from an American school because we are mostly Hispanic. The majority of Buckley High School is populated by minorities and students that live in low incomes. Thank you.
Kadaya Joseph.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kadaya and I'm in the South Campus Buckley. This is my first year at Buckley and I wish it was my last because Buckley sucks. First, the food is so nasty. Please do better. And I don't know who says we get healthy meals, but heating up food needs to stop. It's nasty and it makes people's stomach hurts. Second, the little school that we in is dirty and it has bugs and the bugs be flying everywhere. And also the Florida is very dirty. The classrooms that we are in are always hot and we also have to eat in there because we have no cafeteria. Third, some of the staffs are rude and they think because they're staffs, they could talk to us crazy. And we can't talk back because we'll get in trouble. They need to set a good example. Nothing about this school is okay. Last thing, the small bathroom, no offense, but we are too big to use those little bathrooms. Finally, we need our school as promised. Thank you.
Chanelle Morris.
Good evening. My name is Chanelle and I am the Program Director for the Grow Hartford Youth Program. We focus on empowering youth to advocate for food justice in their schools and community. Over the years, I've heard many complaints from students about the food being unhealthy, unappetizing, unfilling, culturally inappropriate, and lacking in variety. This leads to students skipping their lunch, throwing out the meals, and going hungry throughout the day. Even though the basic human right of real quality food is not being met, students are still expected to excel academically and behave properly. However, this cannot be a realistic expectation since there is a direct connection between food and physical and mental health. Therefore, it is incredibly important that our youth are nourished properly with the highest quality food so that they can succeed academically and live long lives without health issues. While food is supposed to nourish the body, in America, food is the number-one killer since it can lead to chronic illnesses like heart disease, diabetes, high blood pressure, obesity, cancer, and much more. Because the main option for Hartford Public Schools is processed junk food, students' physical and mental health is being compromised each day at school. At the Grow Hartford Youth Program, we have the solution. We, we believe that implementing a local school food system that emphasizes whole foods, locally grown food, and culturally appropriate foods can improve academic performance, student behavior, and even attendance. Schools should invest in school gardens the same way they invest in sports fields and gymnasiums. The curriculum should incorporate growing food and culinary arts so that students feel connected to where their food comes from. Teaching youth about the importance of nutrition can also play a role in having students value healthy food and how it impacts them physically and mentally. All schools should have scratch-cooked kitchens where meals can be prepared from scratch. Schools should also include students in picking the menu. Our Ten Slices of Justice and School Food Rubric, Assessing Healthy and Nutritious, Ethical, and Youth-Centered School Food, provide clear steps to make improvements. We look forward to working with you in the near future. Thank you.
Brianna Arce.
Good evening Superintendent and Board of Education members. My name is Brianna and I'm a senior at Buckley High School on the North Campus. When the seniors were in ninth grade, the Hartford Public Schools gave the news that our school was going to be divided into two campuses, ninth and 10th graders at Old Dwight School located at 585 Weathersfield Ave and 11th and 12th graders at the Old Twain School located at 395 Lime Street. They also told us that we will be in our new building for our senior year. Here I am about to graduate in a few weeks and I never came back to my high school. Our high school dreams went down the drain. I am finally out of here. But for the other ones coming behind us, please make their high school's experience better than ours. We all deserve better. Thank you.
Michael Downs.
Good evening Board members, Superintendent. My name is Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. I have here a tentative collective bargaining agreement signed by the Chief Negotiator, Attorney Kaufman, for the Central Office, Management, and me. This was a contract developed through negotiations, some parts of which I like or we like, some parts not so much, some parts the management likes, and some parts not so much. But we were able to, through friendly negotiations, come up with a compromise. And so the end product is a compromise agreement. Now, this is just the board's, or the, the board's portion of the contract. This contract, portion of the contract was agreed to and ratified by the union last Thursday. And I'm requesting that you also look at this and ratify it. I would appreciate it. There is another portion of our contract, of a contract, or a different contract really, going on, negotiations going on between the Harvard Board, the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers and the City of Hartford concerning a retirement package. The Board doesn't negotiate retirement packages. The city does. So we're going to hold the city's feet to the fire. Thank you.
Carol Gale.
Good evening, Members of the Board of Ed and Superintendent of Schools. My name is Carol Gale. I am a longtime Hartford resident and currently the President of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. My comments tonight will actually be fairly brief. First, I'd like to thank the Superintendent for attending HFT's first book, Reading Opens the World, event last Saturday. This was held at the South End Boys and Girls Club where thousands of books were offered free to students. The Superintendent's presence and support at the event illustrates the collaboration between the district and the union that benefits our students, many of whom now have ample summer reading. So thank you, Dr. Torres Rodriguez, for joining us at this event. Secondly, on the board's agenda this evening is the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the Board and the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers. As with all collective bargaining agreements, this proposed agreement represents numerous hours of time on the part of both sides to prepare proposals and negotiate in good faith across the table. The tentative contract, as you heard from Mr. Downs, was ratified by the membership of the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers, and I ask for your support in approving this contract. I also would like to thank you for promoting our students' artwork and I'm thrilled to be able to take home a few cards that are from our students. And lastly, I have to give a shout out as a former civics teacher of many years in Hartford to our Hartford students who are here exercising your civic duty to speak to your Board of Education. Congratulations to you. And I hope the Board takes seriously the input from the students who your decisions do impact on a daily basis. Thank you very much.
Patricia Mack.
Board of Education members and the Superintendent, my name is Patricia Mack. And tonight, I would like to inform you on the progress of the Carrie Saxon Perry mural at Sand School. Today, I would like to speak on the timeline of our project's unveiling. From my understanding, the unveiling date has been set for Saturday, June 10. However, there is only, that is the only information that I can give you at this time. I was asked to speak with members from the Hartford Public School System to plan this event. However, no meeting has taken place as of yet. Here are a few questions I need to have addressed. Do we have an official time for this event? Do we have a guest speaker? Has Trinity College, as our partners, received information on this event? How are we advertising the event? Has the media been informed? Do we have flyers or robo-calls made to the families of the Sand School community? These are just a few details the community members have asked me and which I cannot provide answers for. There is also a large group of senior citizens who would love to attend this event. However, they're very concerned because they don't have a time at this time. Furthermore, have the students at Sand School been provided with the history of our former Hartford mayor? Have their families been informed of the significant event that will be taking place less than a month away? This project was originally developed as a student engagement project. This project should fit in with the new state requirements for teaching our students about minority history. Finally, the unveiling budget. For the ceremony is $1,500 for decor and refreshments. This is something we must do immediately. Sadly, this is where we currently stand with this project. I am seeking your help and asking for your help because we wish to have this event a success for our former mayor, Carrie Saxon Perry. I would also like to say to the students at Buckley High School, I commend you for advocating for your school because I will say to you, I'm a former graduate of Weaver High School and I know what it's like to feel left out. There have been many, many times when students' voices are heard, but nothing is done. So please do yourself a favor. Don't stop today. If nothing gets done today, it's okay. Come back in June. Come back in September. Come back in November. Come back until they, the adults, address your concerns. Thank you and have a good evening.
John Walton.
Good evening Superintendent and distinguished Board members. Again, I have to piggyback and say the same thing. Wow. I'm impressed that you are advocating for yourselves. This is what it's all about, young people. I wish I was as brave as you at the age that you are doing it, but I made a lot of mistakes. I was once you, and now I'm here advocating for the adults for situations we need and also for you guys as well. So I commend you because you're a lot braver than I was. And Board members and Superintendent, I am extremely ecstatic about the last board meeting in which I watched and the urgency that you were really listening to what we've been talking about when it comes to the trades being added back into the curriculum and added back into our school system. You have been paying attention and you hear us, and I commend the hard work that you're doing. And I'm, I'm proud. I really am about the moves that you're making legislatively and what we're trying to reincorporate back into academics. But this is going to be a tough conversation. And because we're, we're of education, tough conversations have to be around education. And I noticed when the kids were talking, one of the things they talked about was a department that I'm a union president of, food service, and how the service has been terrible. Let me introduce you to somebody. This is Ms. Sandra Wright, 12 years of service. Immigrated from Jamaica, here, lives in Hartford. And when I first met Ms. Sandra, she wanted to use a personal day to go bring her kids, her grandkids, to the airport so that they could fly back to their parents because she had guardianship of her grandkids while they were in the States. And she was berated at food service headquarters by the leadership there. And they have a tendency and a policy there that when they talk to the individuals there, they put tissue paper in the center of the table indicating they're going to make someone cry. And then, when they talk to the individuals there, they don't talk to them as adults or equals or partners. They talk to them as children, not starting with positive reinforcement, but creating a negative atmosphere to show control and power. The reason I'm bringing that up is because the director there has put in for her retirement. And we are just hoping that the search for that position goes to someone who could be more in tuned and aligned with our model of excellence and bring the right, the proper culture and climate. Because I'm going to see, like I told you, Board members, my issue isn't here. Superintendent, my issue isn't with you. And I got to give your chief some credit, the Chief of Operations, the Chief of OTM, the Director of Legal Labor, and the Chief of Community Partners. I'm a tough person to deal with because I'm a part of this community. I live here. I have children here and I'm not going anywhere. And they have to deal with me and some things we don't agree and some things we do, but they have always been respectful and they have always given audience to our concerns. So my issue has been with that layer of direction. And why this is important to the Board, that layer of direction underneath that is directly there is because they've created a culture and climate in a system what we call stacking the deck, hiring people who have their same ideals and keep that same system of oppression that I've talked about for so many times I've been here. See, that's real. And let me show you how real it is. When I, and I didn't want to take away from the kids and I didn't want to take away from what's important here, so I didn't mention this a long time ago because I wanted you guys to focus on what is important to the kids and what is important for them. And I didn't want to suck all of the oxygen out of the room. But when I started my campaign as union president, I was called the N-word here in 2021. I used the campaign flyer with my face and my child's face on it. And it was destroyed. It was sliced out. It was taken off walls. It was torn apart. I was called a monkey. I should return back to Africa. And you wouldn't believe that stuff is happening in our school system, but it actually does. And I know you have been here to try to address that, Superintendent. We're trying to address that. But that direct level, they're not interested in that direction. They're interested in keeping the status quo. And why that's important is because our members, if they treat our members like that and they treat me like that, God knows how the kids get treated on what their intentions are for our children. Right? Because it's sad that we have to talk about that in 2023, but it's real. It isn't going anywhere unless we do what we need to do to change that and address that. And we're hoping, there's a lot of open positions that are opening up in that management director and supervisor field. And we want people in there that reflect our model of excellence, that reflect the inclusiveness and the diversity that this city needs and is. Not the same old status quo that kept so many of us oppressed for so, for so long because we had voices and we would raise our concerns. Why that's important to the Board is because that goes to spending. Many of these individuals make top dollar, six figures. And they've created a system and an environment where they dictate work and they absolutely do nothing. Our members in food service could attest to field supervisors just walking out and standing them. The, the, one of the dishwashers may have called out because of a sick day and the supervisor will stand there and watch our individuals work, not lending a hand. They've created an environment where they have instituted into their agreement that they have non-working positions in the, in, in the City of Hartford. Non-working positions at six figures, costing us a fortune as taxpayers. One of the things I admire about you, Superintendent, and I'll, and I'll give you this. What I love when you start the, the school year is that you empty out central office and all hands on deck, giving everyone the idea that no job is too great for any of us to do. And everyone has to be all hands on deck. But yet, we have supervisors who get paid to be off-deck, if you, if you understand what I mean. That is costing the City a fortune and, and, and it is undermining, Superintendent, your vision and the Board's vision for inclusiveness and the culture and climate needed for our community and our children. Thank you for your attention and I appreciate you. And this will be my last presentation, presentation to you guys until September because I know you guys need a break to get to the real business, which is for these children, and we all need to have a good summer. So thank you again. So thank you again.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Before we move to the report of the Chair, I do want to call for a two to three minute recess for the Board to actually take a look at the posters here that students have provided. I wanted to make sure that we get a chance to actually see the work that you've put in there, put into here. So we'll take a two to three minute recess and we'll convene and continue our, continue our meeting. We're now back in session. We now move to the report of the Chair. I just wanted to highlight a few events of Board Members, that Board Members attended, including peso, a peso teacher's dinner thanking them for their work as they received their citations, and the Hartford, Hartford Federation Teacher Leadership Program's final showcase, which program participants presented their research findings. Both were attended by Board Member Francois Ledger. As always, I will continue to remind every board meeting, you can find the full committee reports as well as all attachments and videos in the meeting agenda of Board Docs. A reminder that all committee, all committee and workshop meetings are live streamed as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting agenda on Board Docs. I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions or feedback, please contact Christina Santiago, our Board Liaison, at csantiago@hartfordschools.org. We now move on to the report of the Superintendent.
Thank you. I have a PowerPoint to go along with my report, and as a reminder, the extended report is also available on Board Docs. We're just gonna do a quick update on attendance, right? We continue, if we go to the next slide, Ms. Santiago, to have the positive momentum as we near the end of the school year. Happy to report that 1,907 students who were chronically absent are no longer listed as chronically absent, that is a significant improvement. We know that we still have some work to do to end the year strong. June 9th is the final week of our home run derby for schools to complete, compete in the championship to win a field trip for next year. In our next slide, this is a different view that I'm sharing. It just kind of highlights where our schools are relative to their specific targets. So congratulations to Kinsella Upper, McDonough, Pathways, University High, Breakthrough North, Dwight Bilizi, Elams, MD Fox, Milner, Nayler Parkville, Global, Rossin for hitting their 2022, 23 extra targets, encouraging everyone to take a look. I actually attended three neighborhood revitalization zone meetings last week, and there was actually conversation with community members around our chronic absenteeism and attendance rates. And so we know that there's, there's interest and our community is also interested in understanding how we are not only supporting our students, but also how we're moving toward our targets. And so we see that there are schools that are close to target and schools that are off target at the moment. Our teams continue to provide targeted supports to, to those schools. Shifting in terms of topics, we're here tonight, and at the beginning you were seeing, viewing original artwork, images of artwork that was made by our students, and we have some, some cards there, and we also had some on the screen. The art is being displayed at the Hartford Youth Art Renaissance at the Walthsworth Ethneum Museum of Art. It's the 50th year for the partnership with the Walthsworth, and I want to invite everyone to check out the great, beautiful exhibition. It closes on May 28th. I will be there tomorrow night celebrating with our students and our families and our art teachers who've provided, right, the inspiration, the guidance, and the support to make this exhibit possible. And thank you to Ms. Tracy Avicoli for her leadership and support, right, as she is our Director of Arts and Wellness. And just double clicking on two images, you see them not only in the PowerPoint, but you see them on the edges of our stage. Giving a special shout out to the two students whose work earned them a scholarship for a summer program through the Hartford Art School at the University of Hartford. The Visual Arts Portfolio Workshop connects our high school students with other artists and provides opportunities to create new materials so that they can continue to build their portfolios. So congratulations to Leishka Morales from Pathways Academy of Technology and Design and Louis Cruz from Hartford Public High School. They both won the scholarships. Want to just make a connection to, as before we transition to Seal of Bilitracy and making the connection to the chronic absenteeism and work that's happening in parallel, in addition to supporting our schools, the team as we end the year is also working on revising, reviewing and potentially revising some of our processes and protocols that support the continuum of tiered supports. For example, our team members are looking at the overall processes and operating procedures relative to not only suspensions, but also expulsions. They're reviewing the timeline between an expulsion recommendation and any manifestation meetings that have to happen per special education requirements. And we've noticed that there have been delays in terms of when a recommendation for an expulsion is made and some challenges relative to capacity with the amount of expulsions that we potentially have and the pace in which they're able to be heard. And so we're looking at all of that. There is, and I know there's something on the, on the agenda later on tonight that also addresses the enhancement that we're hoping to make to the entire process. So I just wanted to make the connection that, you know, absenteeism is, you know, an indicator of student engagement, and when students are either lose any instruction time, whether it is because they're absent or as a result of a suspension or an expulsion, right, all of those things, we, we have to look at it holistically. So we continue to work on that. And lastly, shifting to Seal of Bilitracy, as many of you know, we, we do have our annual celebration on Thursday of this week. This award is given to students who are proficient in two or more languages by the time they graduate high school. The Seal of Bilitracy is noted on the students' diplomas and their transcripts, and in some cases they receive college credit for the work that they completed in high school. This year, we have over 160 students who have earned the Seal of Bilitracy spanning 12 different languages, including Spanish, Portuguese, Korean, Swahili, patois, I mean, a variety, and we're so proud of the diversity that we have across our schools, and we want to continue, right, to celebrate that. And I want to give special recognition to three of our students who have not only earned the seal in two languages, they are proficient in three languages. Jennifer Santos Oliveria, Oliveira, Tanya Rocha Suarez, and Sabrina Núñez Ferreira. They're here, I believe, with us tonight, and I would like to invite all of these young ladies to come up and receive a certificate. And as they're walking up, Sabrina is a senior at Classical Magnet. She grew up in Brazil and moved to the U.S. at the age of 13, only knowing Portuguese. She is now proficient in Spanish and English as well, on her way to Eastern Connecticut State University. Jennifer and Tanya both attend Hartford High, they were both born in Brazil. They were both born in Brazil and, and moved to the United States at the, within the last two years without knowing how to speak English or Spanish. Now they're proficient in both, along with their native Portuguese. Congratulations. That concludes my report.
Thank you Superintendent. We now move, sorry, before we move on to the business agenda, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues as it relates to the report that the Superintendent just provided us? Board Member Brody.
Good evening. So I was having a conversation with a community member and I just want to confirm for our students that are chronically absent, there's some that even if they came to school every single day, from whatever point where it's too late for them to, there was a feel that we kind of, I don't want to say write them off, but we don't focus on still like intensely getting them back in school. So that was a, an observation and a concern that we're not giving up on, even the ones that will still be chronically absent at the very last day of school. So I just wanted to raise that we're not giving up on any student, no matter if they're going to help us meet a mark on our data. We still need them in school, no matter if they're going to make the goal or not.
Superintendent?
Absolutely. I, I want to make it explicitly clear that the expectation is not to give up on any student. We want to make sure that we continue to reengage students. And right, a student might have those 18 absences, but there's still opportunity for us to reengage in the learning and skill set development and potentially credit recovery for students. And so, and, I mean, I can go on and on, and identifying the root cause to potentially connect that young person to not only internal supports, but external supports in the community. And so I look forward to understanding where that came from specifically so that we can address it.
Are there further questions or comments from my colleagues? Board Member Johnson?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Rodriguez, can you just talk about tomorrow in the art event and just give the time and location one more time? I didn't get a chance to catch the flyer.
Yes. And we're having it there as well. Tomorrow for 30 to 7:00 P.M., we're going to have a great celebration. Wattsworth Ethneum. Everyone is invited.
Thank you.
I do have one question. If we go back to the slide that had school targets, are there any themes or takeaways as it relates to the off-target? Like what's happening there? Is there, like what's driving that?
It's a variety of situations. One is relative to staffing, right? Knowing that we want all teachers to take attendance. And we know that in some schools there are teacher shortages. And so there's at times a delay in when those get inputted. And there's others that we need to continue to provide support relative to the process. And then there's the, the work that has to happen and potentially this is what Ms. Brody was referring to, right? Trying to reengage the students that are at a different end of the continuum. So I would say a variety, not one specific reason why.
Thank you. Board Member Brody, yes.
No, I have a, a comment and it, and it was years ago and it's, and I'm, as I'm looking at that slide. And I only see it for Bachelor and Fisher. It was so the official name, like, because I, I saw it. It was like a Facebook post of all how the schools got named after people and what these people was all about. Like it was a really good post that someone, it was like an article, right? So it's saying Montessori Magnet at Bachelor, Montessori Magnet at Fisher. It was a deep discussion years ago. Is Annie Fisher Montessori? Is Bachelor Montessori? And to not let a theme lead the name of a school, to respect the name of the person that the school was named after. I think we do a much better job now because before it was, we had much more, you know, themes. But just keeping that in mind that a theme is not leading the name of a school.
Thank you, Ms. Brody. We now move to the business agenda. Item 4.1, contract approval, summer experience contracts. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to execute contracts with the agencies listed below for the term outlined in the contracts not to exceed specific amounts. Do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Superintendent?
Yes, I will provide some support here. We, as you know, we do offer comprehensive summer learning and enrichment opportunities that includes early start, middle grade, special education, extended year, summer bridge and our credit recovery. So we are partnering with our community-based organizations to, so that they can lend their expertise in enrichment programming with a focus on SEL, SE, Social Emotional Development, Arts and Wellness, our College and Career Exploratory for our early start, middle school and summer bridge. That is a broad brush, but I know that several conversations and presentations have been made in committee as to our summer programming. There are a variety of agencies. You have them on page two. Our CBOs were invited to apply for summer enrichment funding through NRFP. CBOs were asked to represent their program that addresses direct services to youth and integrates the social emotional learning in the enrichment activities. And so we're expected to maintain a 75% attendance rate during the, the program. And we will continue to work with our performance office to determine the pre and the post survey for students that participated in the program.
Thank you. Do I have any comments or questions from my colleagues? And I do want to acknowledge Board Member Escobano is also online. Board Member Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to ask a question around capacity and quality. I think these are two things that, that I think that we need to focus on as it pertains to our, our programming. You know, my, I, my son was in act up theater and they did a performance last weekend. He seemed to really enjoy it. He came home wanting to learn his lines and I was proud to kind of vote on that contract here and be a part of that and to see it play out in real time. But I also want to make sure that the quality of our programs, I just don't want us to vote on, you know, the idea of programs without hearing the quality of programs and also the capacity of the staff in the programs to make sure that they deliver the quality. So I, I just wanted to ask that broad question about quality and capacity. Because again, I actually have the opportunity to watch it play out in real time with my own kids at home.
Superintendent?
Yes, and Chief Blackberg, and I see a variety of various partners here. Perhaps Chief Blackberg, you can begin by speaking to expectations relative to staffing and then take it from there.
Absolutely, and good evening to the board. Thank you, and also to our wonderful partners who have joined us. And we do have some that are online joining us as well as some who aren't able to be here because they are either ill or they are traveling out of state. But I do want to inform the entire board that all those who are expected to receive contracts, if approved tonight, did attend the Family and Community Engagement Committee meeting held on May 4th. And so during that committee meeting on May 4th, we did talk about capacity. That was a question that we asked in the RFP. In the RFP, we asked our partners very clearly, will you have the staffing to meet the need for our expectations? One of the expectations that we do have, as mentioned by the Superintendent, is that 75% attendance rate. And in order to make that happen, as you put groups together of students, you are going to need the staff to do that. When you speak to quality, all of our providers, they do work, some of them in our schools. But again, that's another question that we ask in our RFP process. Like, okay, what is it that you are offering? What are you bringing to the table? Are you just hiring, you know, folks in the summertime? No, these are individuals who are skilled and learned based on the craft that they are presenting to us in the RFP. Again, just for listening, those who are listening and those of you who are not a part of the committee, the RFP is procured through the City of Hartford Procurement Office and that, that process is done by them. So they are looking at all of those documents and then sharing them with our department. And then we bring that to the Family and Community Engagement Committee meeting. And then from there, here we are. So in regards to capacity, yes, they have shown us through the RFP process and what they, most of them are working in school. We do have some that are not currently working in our schools, but they do have the staff to meet the need that we are asking for, for this summer enrichment experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? I, I do have one, I guess, question or comment or observation. As you were talking, what dawned on me, as we often hear that there's a workforce shortage, but for some odd reason you guys, it sounds, it sounds like you guys are able to actually recruit. Not looking for an answer right now, but I'd be very interested to know, what's the secret sauce that you guys use to actually recruit? And is there some synergies that, as a district, that we might be able to leverage? Given that there are partners, again, not looking for an answer today, but as you were talking, that, that dawned on me in terms of capacity. If we're asking them to, right, increase capacity, is there potential lessons learned that we? Granted, I know it's a different space, but something that I would, I hope we could explore.
And thank you for the question, Mr. Chair. The only piece that I will add to that is of course, many of our partners during a school year do face that same challenge of addressing a shortage because it's during that timeframe. But what we are looking at currently with the wonderful partners here is that it's a seasonal component. So you may have an opportunity to work with individuals who are home for a summer. You may have the opportunity to work with individuals who maybe are a 10-month employee somewhere else. So that's one piece of it. But as you said, we don't have to provide that full answer today, but just wanted to lead with that, that we are looking at four weeks in the summer, working with partners who have the, you know, really the capability to hire folks for that time period. So do understand and recognize that there is a shortage across the board, even for our partners, as they look to staff during a full school year.
Thank you. Board Member Escobano, I want to make sure I give you time. Do you have any questions or comments for our participants here? Okay. Are there any further questions? Board Member Ledger?
Thank you so much. I just have really more of a comment. I remember last summer, the summer enrichment program was very engaging. I was able to visit the program that was taking place at Weaver High School. And it was nice to see the young people, to see them engaged and just participating and having something to do over the summer. And also I was able to observe their final project, their presentation on their final day. And it was a beautiful celebration and it's nice to see community partners come out and engage with the children. That's all I wanted to say. So I look forward to seeing this, this summer as well.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Ed, Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to execute a contract with the agencies listed as the agenda item for the term outlined in the contracts not to exceed specified amounts. All those who favor signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Congratulations. Item 4.2, second reading and adoptions, policies listed below. Policies with edits, policy 5132, student attire, policy 1110.3, school governance councils, and policies for recalcification, district accreditation, 1531, 1600, to change to 1531, 1531, report cards and grading. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education adopts these policies as listed. Do I have a motion? Board Member Johnson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. We are going to have our second reading and I believe Dr. Silver has made our way to the, to the proper place. All right, so our second reading and adoption of student attire. In November 2022, families joined us to review the student attire policy which addresses student uniforms. Data from Fall 2022 survey was shared, noting that 30% of students and 27% of families agreed that the student does not attend school if they don't have a uniform. Families reported valuing the principal's role in supporting students who may not have a uniform with spare uniforms, as well as spare uniforms from the Welcome Center. Families also asked for quality sew-on, iron-on logos that kept their color and shape through many washings. Amen to that. Revisions include these updates informed by our families. I just want to say to this particular policy, I am just very excited that we've had a lot of engagement. And not only do I want to shout out Dr. Silver, but Chief Blackberg as well for making sure that we had engagement on this policy. Would you like me to continue, Mr. Chair, through the second policy of the student governance?
Yes.
And all the second policies. Thank you. All right, on to our next second reading and adoption of school governance councils. In December, families joined us to review the School Governance Council policy. The School Governance Council is the primary school-based decision-making body devoted to achieve its mission and vision. Toward this end, the SGC focuses on the analysis of student achievement, development of improvement plans, allocation of resources, programmatic and operational changes. This is an effective policy and is well implemented in our schools. The only revision is that voting members can no longer serve more than four terms, a change required by re- a change required by recent legislative updates. I'll move on to our second reading, uh, four policies for recodification. The policy committee undertook significant recodification work following K-Policy manual audit in November 2021. We are happy to report that at that time, over 100 policies were updated with new numbers. No content to the policy was changed, only a change in the number. In November 2021, recodification created overlap with these four policies. For this reason, these policy numbers need to be updated as follows. District accreditation, 1531 slash 6200, change to 1531. Report cards, change from 6142 to 6146 point 12. Grading, change from 6146 to 6146 point 1. Smoking and tobacco use, from 4118 point 51 slash 4218 point 51 to 4... These are tonight's lottery numbers, okay? 4118 point 232 slash 4218 point 232. I believe that is the, the second reading of all policies up for vote tonight.
Are there any discussions? I, I do have one question, uh, Board Member Johnson, uh, for public consumption. Can you please, uh, maybe clarify, um, the constituents that make up the school governance councils?
Uh, certainly, and, uh, with the help, because I believe I served on a SGC, there, there are community members. There, um, obviously, uh, the principal is, uh, on the SGC. Um, I've been a part of some with business owners, uh, just stakeholders in the community. Um, and as we know, SGCs are mandated by the state to, uh, to, to make decisions for, for schools. And hopefully I, I've expressed that properly. Um, but if there's anything else that I might have missed, uh, by all means, Dr. Silver and Superintendent, please step in.
I believe... Did you mention students also?
I did not mention students or parents, but they are a part of the SGC.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions? Okay. Um, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education adopts the policies as listed. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. Moving on to four, item 4.3, first reading, 5141, health services. As this is the first reading, no vote is required at this time. However, um, if there are questions or discussions, please, uh, Board Member Johnson?
Yes, I'll make this, uh, as expedient as possible. So this is our first reading, student health services, school district medical advisor. The school district medical advisor is an important role in the Hartford Public Schools. We are deeply, uh, concerned about the health of our students and want to ensure that the district health practices align with state requirements and help our children to continue to thrive. Significant updates to the student health services. School medical advisor policy, 5141, were recommended and integrated to the existing policy to ensure the policy reflects current Department of Health regulations as well as state and federal law. During the committee meeting, board members asked probing questions regarding the cost of various services provided by schools and security of student health records. Our policy committee continues to focus on ensuring our policies are up to date, comply with state and federal requirements and meet the needs of our community. The district is in process of scheduling conversations about, uh, the equity policy to ensure student, staff and community voices are integrated into this most important policy.
Thank you, Board Member Johnson. Are there any, uh, questions for Mr. Johnson? Seeing none, um, as, again, as this is the first reading, no vote is required at this time. Moving on to the agenda, um, item number five, consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are 5.2 continuation approval, Parent Square Inc., 5.3 approval of E-rate, 5.4 appointment of impartial hearing officers, 5.5 approval, accept BNG facility roof replacement as complete, 5.6 acceptance of funds, school-based health alliance, and 5.7 approval of minutes from April 18th, 2023. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to take the consent agenda up as one item? So moved?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Now that the consent agenda is one item, do I have a motion to vote on the consent agenda? So moved?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Uh, we have one nay, one abstention, uh, the ayes have it. Moving to item six, executive session, executive session, discussion of documents related to collective bargaining, collective bargaining. We'd be going to executive session to discuss document, documents related to collective bargaining. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair?
Second.
All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions, the ayes have it, we'll be taking it to executive session. Chief Curtis, Chief Penn, Attorney Linda Kaufman and Lori Mizurik. Tyra?
Tyron.